And I'd like to welcome everyone and wish you all a happy holiday season. At this point, open forum, I know Chief went around and asked if there's something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to comment on, now's the time. If something's on the agenda, you'll have that opportunity when that agenda item comes up. Seeing none, we'll move along to reports. First report is mine, the mayor's, and it's a great sadness and really a personal loss, not only to myself but to the entire community. Within this past week, we lost two great women who volunteered and represented the Westmont Park District for over 75 years between them. Both these individuals gave tireless time and effort and did not get compensated for. The park system we have today is, these two ladies are one of the reasons why we have that today. They saw a vision, they went out and acquired land and followed through and gave all the time and effort. So we lost two, Diane Main and Sandra Smith. Diane Main, there'll be a Diane Main, there is a Diane Main Park on 59th Street, formerly was Twin Lakes Park. And Sandra Smith, there'll be Smith Woods, which is on 55th Street, which were the Twin Lakes Woods. Again, this is, I've worked with both these individuals for over 37 years personally in my, being the director of the Park District. These are two outstanding residents who thought about the community first than about themselves. So I'll move on. State of the Village video, our 2017 State of the Village address recording is on our Village YouTube site. Please, everyone, get a chance, watch it. Recently, we recognize our service awards at the annual luncheon, and we want to thank all those individuals for all the service they provided to the village. Our Citizen of the Year nominations are available at the chamber, available here at Village Hall. They're probably due in February, if I'm not mistaken, but last year's winner was Diane Main for all she's done. So that's all I have. I'll move on to Clerk Zimski.
I just want to remind everybody that village offices will be closed December 25th for Christmas, January 1st for New Year's, as well as January 15th for Martin Luther King Day. And chime in with you about how blessed we were to have those two women on our Park District Board. I get very emotional when I think that we lost both of them within days of each other. So we're losing two outstanding people in our community where we did lose plus George Willcock. So it's been a bad month for us. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, except happy holidays to everyone.
Trustee Addington.
Couple of things. First one, of course, is condolences to the families of Sandy and Diane, two people that I've known for a long, long time and have had great respect for. The other is that they moved up the meeting of DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference to the 19th because of the holidays. And again, legislatures are all out of town or out for the holidays, so not a lot going on, except that the opposition to House Bill 1451, which we'll have on the agenda tonight with our resolution, seems to be gaining a lot of traction now with the other councils of government, other than DuPage Mayors and Managers. A lot of others are jumping in. So, and I'll have this, I'll give this to the manager, I did a little report. Some of you may recall last year that they passed a new law that said that when monies were cut to the various communities across Illinois, that they were going to charge a 2% fee that was supposed to go to the Department of Revenue to cover their costs of processing that 2%.
Their cost of keeping our money.
Right. They now have introduced two bills. The first one is that if that account builds up to over 2.5 million, they don't have to give it to the Department of Revenue, they can just sweep the money into the general The other bill is even a little more interesting because the second bill is to appeal the 2%. I don't think it's going to get a lot of traction, but you know, we'll see what happens. There is, there's a couple of other bills that were introduced that we talked about. We're going to monitor them for a while. One is on assault weapons. State's trying to pass the onus of controlling that stuff to the communities, and that really doesn't work. And the other one is, I think a lot of people know that these gaming cafes make a little bit of money. So there's now a bill to reconsider how the money is spread. The state wants to take 30% of the money that's going to the machine owners and the cafes into state revenue and cut what goes to the cafe owners. I've only talked to one of them since this bill was made light, and they said that we would just kill them, basically taking 30% of their income away, just like that. So again, don't know how much traction these will have. I'll give this report to Steve and he'll get it, Patty to copy it and give it to all of you. But again, DuPage Mayors and Managers and Legislative Committee tends to be interesting. And so we will continue to stay with that. And the only other thing that I have is happy holidays to everybody. Let's have a great Christmas.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I also too want to send my condolences to the Maine and Smith family. Wish everyone a very happy holidays, happy and safe 2018. We will see everyone in the new year. And I also just want to remind everyone to keep the wreath red. There are wreaths at the North and South Fire Stations, and they're with red bulbs. Anytime that a fire is started with a holiday decoration, a bulb will be replaced from red to white. So please, let's help the fire department and keep the wreath red. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on over here. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Again, condolences to the Maine and Smith family. But moving on, our next Public Safety Committee meeting is February 15th of next year. And I also like to just remind everybody that the Citizens' Fire Academy class will be starting April 5th of next year, so look for more information coming out soon here after the new year. And as we discussed at the last Public Safety Committee meeting, the Police Department did publish the annual report on the website, if you want to go and review it on there, all the details you can. I encourage residents and interested parties to check it out. Lot of good information on what the Police Department has done for the past year. And lastly, just everybody have a Merry Christmas and enjoy the holiday season and Happy New Year. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have a couple of quick announcements and then presentation if we could. Look for the Holidays Parade video on the Village's YouTube channel, which can be found on the Village website. That was an amazing parade. Everybody had a great time. Westmont Special Events is now looking into the possibility of creating a St. Patrick's Day pub tour event. On the tails of having had a wonderful one over Halloween time, we're going to do another one in the spring. And so at the time, right now, the name that being is considered is St. Patty's Day Irish Jig and Swig. But there's another, if anybody has a better idea, come, you know, come see us. Jig and Swig. So look for details coming out after the first of the year for a pub crawl. And now I'd like to introduce from the Holidays Festival Chairperson, Steve Golombuski, and he's going to announce the winners of the Holidays Decorating Contest.
Thank you, Trustee Little. Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and the rest of the trustees. Good evening. My name is Steve Golombuski. I'm the Superintendent of Recreation at the beautiful Westmont Park District. Also, I am the Chair of the Holidays Committee. And each year, in partnership with the Village of Westmont, the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, Westmont Park District, Westmont Historical Society, and the Westmont Special Events Corporation, we conduct a very delightful Holidays Business and Home Decorating Contest. Our holiday season offers a special opportunity for our businesses and residents to show off their holiday decorating skills for the enjoyment of all. Thank you to everyone that use their time and talents to make Westmont Holidays so festive. Residents and businesses were judged based on originality, arrangement, theme, and overall concept. The judges had a very difficult task, but after careful deliberation, we have our winners. We thank them for volunteering for this tough task. Along with the mayor, our village board, and community, is our great pleasure to recognize those businesses that have helped bring warmth and good cheer to our community through their exceptional holidays decoration. Now, let's recognize the winners of the 2017 Holidays Business Decorating Contest. We will start with our third place winner, we will start with our third place winner with Dickens Village theme, is Clemens Enterprise at 8th North Cass Village Avenue. Allison Clemens is here with us this evening. Let's all congratulate Allison. Thank you very much. Picture?
Linda. Linda.
Our second place winner with a Winter Woodlands theme is a brand-new business in its first-time entry, a warm Westmont welcome to the Artist Block Gallery located at 22 North Cass Ave. This will be Ed coming up here. Let's give him a round of applause.
In the middle?
I got the tack.
I think we get the whole room.
Next, our first place winner is Safeway Insurance at 790 Pasquenelli Drive, a repeat winner with a Holidays Light theme. Let's give him a round of applause. So the individual that was going to represent them actually had a baby today, so they're not able to make it. So let's give them another round of applause.
Another round.
And now we will present the winners of the 2017 Holidays Home Decorating Contest. We will start with our third place winner, which is the Vowles family at 39 West End Avenue. Joyce Vowles, are you here? She's not here, let's give her a round of applause. Our second place winner with a Caden and Chase Christmas Fantasy theme is the Patrick family who resides at 105 East 60th Street. Pamela, you here? Come for her. And this right here is Caden and Chase, so they are the whole theme. Let's give them a round of applause, right here.
Yeah.
And our first place winner with a Santa's Westmont Bungalow theme is the Christensen family who resides at 307 West Chicago. This holiday display is all whole-made and it was a family project. Congratulations. Now, if we can get all the winners up here quick, all the business and home, right in the middle, we're going to take one group shot. Let's have a warm round of applause for everybody for the home decorating winners. So on behalf of the 2017 Holidays Winter Festival Committee, we congratulate our winners this evening and to thank all of our participating businesses and residents for helping to make Westmont Holidays Winter Festival such a wonderful event. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Steve.
And my last comment is we have the next Administration/Finance meeting, January 4th at 4:00. Encourage everybody to come out, be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things this evening. The first thing is, again, condolences to the Maine and the Smith family. I was fortunate enough to serve on the Park District Board with them for a few years, and they took me under their wing. And you know, if it wasn't for their work with me and a couple of other folks, I wouldn't be sitting here today. So we lost two great people there. And that was our big shoes to fill over there at the Park District. Anyway, moving on, Westmont First is going to meet on Tuesday, January 16th, at the library. We welcome everybody to attend those meetings. Our focus on the 16th is going to be seniors and how we serve the senior community here in Westmont, so we're excited about that. And then also, a plug for the Environmental Improvement Commission, I believe their meeting is January 8th. And they also have a full agenda for that night as well. Mr. Yeater, is that correct, January 8th?
It's the...
9th?
I gotta call June.
January 8th, okay. So we'll see everybody at that meeting as well. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Ziegler, did you have a volunteer appreciation award? And after that, we'll move on to the next agenda.
Mayor and members of the board, we always appreciate you giving us some time to talk about Richmond Education Gardens and apiary. I hate to take up too much of your time, but this year was a really successful year. It was our first year with the apiary actually abuzzing, if you will. And we had a great turnout as far as honey production was concerned. A lot of that was some luck. It's always a little bit of luck. Some was environmental conditions, but the majority of it was a very enthusiastic, very great. First-year beekeeper, also an Environmental Improvement Commission member, Mary McColl. I've actually, I tend to use every experience in life and just kind of take a little bit from all those experiences. Working with Mary was one of those experiences, and she really showed me, I've been beekeeping myself for a few years now, but Mary really seemed to enjoy it. She would talk to the bees, and she would actually sing to them as well, little Irish lullabies or hymns.
It calmed them down.
But it gave me a new spin on, you know, the enjoyment of different things and just how you can work through it. She seemed to take great joy in it. We've, we took, or I should say, her bees produced over 100 pounds of honey between two of the ones that we had that actually made it through the year. That's a very good first year, especially considering all the work they had to do and as well as that she had to do. So we wanted to present a jar of honey to you, Mayor, as well as to Mary, and say thank you for all your efforts out there at the garden.
Thank you for your help.
Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Thank you very much, John. You were a great help, and it's been a real pleasure. I learned a lot. Unfortunately, I'm hanging up my beekeeping garb, but we're turning it over to another great beekeeper, and I'm sure it'll be fabulous next year. But it was a great learning experience, and I was really happy and proud to be part of Richmond Community Garden activities.
And thank you for your service. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mary. Yes?
Oh, thank you.
All right. Pass it around. Yeah. So we did take, like I said, over 100 pounds of honey from the apiary. A lot of that will be bottled and will be for sale after the holidays. All proceeds going to the garden itself. Mary, that other jar of honey obviously is for you and the certificate of our appreciation.
This is lovely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
John, thank you.
Again, thank you very much for your entire support through our building of this project. And as we go through it, that's always appreciated. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member want any of the items removed? Seeing none, I ask manager May to please read.
Tonight on the consent agenda, first item is village board meeting minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held December 7, 2017. Next is finance ordinance number 16 in the amount of $1,891,718.1. We have three purchase orders. First purchase order is LDV Incorporated, $26,051. That's the replacement of the generator on 1888, which is the communications van. Second purchase order, community unit school district 201, $46,808.26 represents their portion of the tax increment financing collection. Last purchase order is WBK Engineering, is Willsburg Kelsey, $67,200, which represents Phase 1 and Phase 2 design engineering for the 61st Incognards, the stormwater improvements in that corner in that basin that's in St. Joseph's Creek. That brings the total of the purchase orders to $140,059.26, and therefore, the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance number 16 is $231,777.27. There's two proclamations on the consent agenda. First is the proclamation honoring Eddie Clearwater or to approve a proclamation celebrating American Blues artist, Eddie, the chief Clearwater. With this approval, it will actually be presented to him at a different awards ceremony in person later in January. Next resolution, trustee Addington referenced, is a resolution encouraging, urging the governor to veto Senate Bill 1451 that created the, would create the Small Cell Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. You'll recall at the last meeting, we had our own ordinance on the agenda, and we indefinitely postponed that pending the result of this. The first action is to get the Deployment Act resolved, and then we can self-govern from there. That concludes the consent agenda. I have the resolutions if anybody wants them read.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Addington. Second. Nero.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business. ERP system. Board to consider ordinance approving a license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies for an enterprise resource planning system. I ask financial director Parker.
So the interest of time, I'll be brief. I know that the board has heard about this in a lot more detail at previous Finance Committee meetings, as well as the budget discussions over the last couple of years. But as a general basis and restatement for the members of the public, this ERP system is a system that will cover finances, as well as the community development, code enforcement, and a lot of other factors within the village. It will all be combined into one system that'll be covering through the whole village, will be able to provide some additional benefits to our residents. We've gotten some requests to be able to do things, make some bill payments online, and be able to see the progress of different things online. And so this will be a big help to them, as well as we'll be able to replace a system that has outlived its typical life several years ago here at the village, and is something that the board's been discussing for the last couple of years, to be able to get up to the current standards that we need to be, that our orders are recommending. So this is something that we've been discussing for the last couple of years, are looking to approve the contract now, and then we'll be implementing over the next couple of years.
Do I have a motion?
Shall I move Guzzo?
Second.
Second, Little.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the question.
Just to point out, the ordinance approving this agreement gives authority to the village attorney and finance director to make some minor tweaks to the agreement. There's still some last-minute negotiations on some more minor points, as long as it doesn't change the essential provisions of the agreement.
Sounds okay. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I covered everything up. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, GIS survey agreement. 2017 Westmont Storm Sewer GIS Mapping Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the GPS field data collection of the village's storm sewer system to be used in the village's 2017 Storm Sewer GIS Mapping Project. Oh, he's there.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This is essentially the mapping of our storm sewer system throughout the entire village. As described to you in the background, our current atlas is an electronic version of hand-drawn maps that we've collected over the years through public works and then our own capital improvement project record drawings. This would actually be the staff going out, well, the consultant going out and physically locating it by GPS and also collecting data from pipe size to slopes to actual location of the manhole, so that we have a very accurate mapping system. Our GIS system that we're actually implementing is only as good as the data, and this would actually give the data that we've been seeking for many years.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second. Nero.
Motion made and seconded. On the question.
I would just like to make a comment. You know, why the, you know, I understand that it's much needed and everything, but people may flinch at that number, you know, it's quite a bit of cost there, but you know, it is the wave of the future, and to capture all that information is much needed, so I support it.
Thank you. Any, any other?
And it's funded from the stormwater fund.
Exactly. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Norio. New business B, Westmont Fire Department Ambulance Fee Increase. Board to consider ordinance to approve an increase in ambulance fees set forth in Chapter 42 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances. We got Chief Weiss.
Thanks, Mayor. Based on the recommendation of Public Safety Committee, the fire department is requesting to increase ambulance fees per the attached proposal. As you remember, at the Public Safety meeting last month, we proposed five different options. The fire department's recommending the middle option of $1,550 across the board, resident, non-resident, as you know, as we reported. For our residents, whatever is not collected from insurance, we do write-off, like we've been doing. And that also includes increase in our cost per mile, because of cost of maintenance of the ambulances and fuel and tires and things like that, so.
Now, we discussed this in length at the committee. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made and seconded to approve as presented. Additional comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want everybody to know that it's really, it's money that's left on the table because it is collected by insurance. The insurance doesn't pay it, and the residents get waived. And I think it has to be clear, it's not something that we're looking to cause the residents a hardship by increasing fees. It's just common, you know, kind of common sense to raise it because insurance allows It's just common, you know, kind of common sense to raise it because insurance allows for, otherwise you're leaving the money there, and we know exactly, you know, that we don't have, we have limited, you know, revenue streams. So I, you know, I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Okay, thank you.
And I think also, we looked at the chart of comparable communities around us, and we're not at the top, so.
No, and actually, we haven't increased ours since 2015, and we're either at average or below average per the survey that's done every year of all the departments in the area.
Good, thanks, Chief.
Can I just clarify? It's not truly a revenue stream, it's really a reimbursement for the cost of services that we provide.
Thank you.
He didn't want anybody thinking it was a revenue stream. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, new business C, amended ordinance establishing a Northwestmont SSA. Board to consider ordinance establishing an amended Northwestmont Special Service Area in the village of Westmont. Now, I'm going to turn to the Attorney Zemanak for comments, or are you going to turn it over to?
No, I'll make just a quick comment. The legal description in the original ordinance passed at the last meeting needed revisions according to the county. We obtained the legal description that the county actually used when they passed a resolution supporting the creation of this SSA. The county signed off on that, so this really just corrects the legal description. The next step, and next on the--
To the format of the legal description. There was nothing wrong with the other one, they just didn't like the form.
Right. So they, we felt, rather than just substituting it, we'd put it on the agenda for a vote. And then the next agenda item, if I can speak to that, is the tax levy for that SSA. Nothing has changed about the tax levy. We just felt that if we're re-establishing the SSA, we should re-approve the tax levy.
And again, the SSA is for fire?
Yes, it's, yeah, fire services in the, I guess it'd be the Liberty Park area.
Yes. So it's a consolidation coming all under Westmont. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and seconded. On the question, sing non-roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, amended tax levy for the Northwestmont Special Service Area. Board to concern ordinance adopting an amended tax levy for the Northwestmont Special Service Area. And financial director Parker, you got anything else to add?
Nope. I think the attorney has covered all the pieces of it.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional comments, questions? Sing non-roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, 3500 Midwest Road Development Approvals. Board to consider ordinances approving the following requests from the PHOBH Hotel Owner LLC and WCW Land Owner LLC related to the zoning and development of 3500 Midwest Road. I'm not going to read the 12 different ordinances until they come up because we got to vote on each one separately, but I'll turn it over to community development director Ziggy.
Thank you, Mayor. We're back before you this evening with a revised proposal at the Oakbrook Hills Hilton property. You'll remember that a natatorium and apartment building were approved at the end of 2016 by the village board. Following legal discussions, the project came to a halt and was re-proposed this year on a different section of the property. The project now includes a 40-acre request to rezone to single-family, which would be developed with future approvals. It includes the natatorium, of course, a seven-story, 299-unit apartment building, reduction of the golf course to nine holes, and 1,930 parking spaces with a temporary parking shortage during the time of construction. The village held two public hearings in November and December, discussed major site plan items including open space preservation, stormwater detention, life safety issues, traffic engineering, architecture, and parking. Following public input, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a positive recommendation, and the attorneys finalized the PD agreement, which is also before you tonight. The applicant has satisfied staff's preliminary review comments, and if approved, would move forward to final engineering and building permits next. I'll let the applicant address the board next, and staff from all of our departments are available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. It's great to be back here once again. I'm going to have Rick Fawell give a, who's our architect, give a brief overview of the project, and then Dan Shapiro's available for any legal questions, and I'm obviously here to answer any questions that any of you may have, but at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Rick and let him kind of walk through the site planning, the revisions that are, you know, same use as different locations and architecture from last time.
Did you load?
No.
Make the IT guy nervous walking in here with your telegraph.
How do you think I feel?
There.
There we go.
All right.
That was painless. My name is Rick Fawell. I'm with the firm Wright-Herman Associates Architects, and I'll walk through this briefly. Feel free to tell me to speed up or slow down and ask questions. I'm happy to do either. First of all, you know the project team, Peter Dumont, Dan Shapiro, myself, Mary Ann and her family with the Kaufman Family Foundation, Ben Busman, our civil engineer, David McCallum, our landscape, and Luwai. Those consultants are here and available for any questions. I won't read the entitlements requested, I think you all know what that entails. Just a graphic that shows you what the existing zoning is and what we're looking for, proposed zoning for the B3. We talked briefly about the parking. You know, parking's always been an issue, but we reconfigured the parking lot. I'll go through this in more detail as we walk through the site plan. So here's the master plan overall, and it's, really what's happened with the parking field is that we redesigned it, relayed it out, so it's more efficient. We realized more spaces than the existing 965. We provide better handicap parking spaces that are more easily accessible to front doors of all the different uses, conference center hotel and natatorium, as well as the future apartments. As was mentioned just briefly, once the natatorium and the parking has been redone in Phase 1, we'll be approximately 102 spaces short of the requirement. That 102 spaces, as I'll show you later, can be picked up by valeting about 400 spaces. So even though there will be 100 spaces short, we'll be able to pick that up for special events, especially by valeting. But ultimately, once the parking, the apartments are built and the parking within the apartments are built, there'll be an extra 186 spaces for the whole site and all the uses, including the apartments. And this is, you know, this is diagrammed with the FAR numbers, but suffice it to say that the FAR numbers have improved dramatically by shifting the natatorium south onto the golf course, by shifting the apartments to the west onto the golf course. Everything's out of the parking, and the overall site is significantly larger, at 126 acres total, including all the, what was previously the front and back nine of the golf course. So these are those plaits, and the only thing that's really changed significantly since our last meeting with the planning and zoning folks was that we incorporated the south pond, south of the hotel, into the hotel parcel, which also includes parking in the roadways, mainly because I think planning and zoning was concerned that ultimately that pond needed to be maintained by the hotel owner. Hotel owner is happy to do that. This diagram is relatively simple, just showing the traffic, proposed traffic, and I think, again, you've seen it last year at this time. It's pretty much the same traffic pattern. The only difference is now with the apartments off to the west, a different traffic pattern to the apartments and then around the apartments. Same thing with the natatorium, to the natatorium and around the natatorium with the emergency There was always concern about, you know, where do pedestrians, where do people walk? Not just the existing residents and the hotel guests, but future guests and apartment tenants. So we did a diagram, a separate diagram, that shows all the different sidewalks and pathways. And you'll notice, too, that there are sidewalks along Casson and Midwest, as well as into the site, on both sides of the entry drive, and then all over around the buildings. So there's well over, I think we calculated well over a mile of pedestrian pathway, so for jogging, for walking, for taking your dog out. We'd been asked about the fire truck access and turning radii around the new buildings, apartment, and the natatorium. So we showed it, we put this diagram together that has all the turning radii. I think that's been vetted with fire department and staff as well. This is just a repeat of what we're looking for in terms of zoning. One of the bigger issues that's been resolved now is there is a conservation easement in place for the oak grove at the main entry. This is that drawing, 5.15 acres. And then this is the, this is a little bit enlarged view of the parking lot, and the key is, again, making it efficient and providing more parking, getting more people closer to the front door when they do park, as well as getting handicap and a better access point to any. I know you can't see this, but this, take my word for it, it's a photometric study of the parking lot to demonstrate that the lighting on the parking lot will be adequate, meets the national standards for, you know, parking, off-street parking, and then at the same time, around the perimeter falls to zero. The, in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see the fixtures we're planning to use, they're sharp, cut-off, LED, efficient, you know, so the lighting is also modernized and meets all the standards, provides safety in single pole and double pole fixtures. This is that diagram that shows the shaded areas, the amount of area we'd have to valet park to be able to pick up the extra 100 spaces in the period between when the natatorium is up and running and the apartment, the apartment parking is available. So this is the site plan for the natatorium. In case you hadn't seen it, as I mentioned, it's located south now, and it's in the same plaza area where golf course drop-off used to be, still will be, as well as the new ballroom addition that takes the place of the tent. That ballroom also on the, is on the ballroom level or the meeting room level of the hotel. Underneath it is golf cart parking, so all of that, you know, pavement that was there for golf cart parking, basketball tennis course, that'll all be taken away and be permeable area. And that's kind of what you see in this, in this site plan. And I don't think I need to belabor the benefits of the natatorium and the issues around it, but suffice it to say, with two pools, which is a sort of an amazing aquatic center complex, to be able to have the luxury of long course, 50-meter, as well as short course, 25-yard, and be able to hold meets in either direction in the big pool with bleachers around three sides, Mary Ann and her family are doing, you know, all of us a great service, and it will be a wonderful amenity, not just for the community, but it'll help put Westmont on the map in terms of aquatics nationally, internationally. It'll allow, we have limited athletes to come and train, coaches to be here. There's really no limit, given the type of facility that Mary Ann and her family have designed. And here's the renderings of that facility, very clean, very simple. And the plans, there's a basement, there's a very small basement for mechanical. The main level, the two big shaded areas are obviously the two pools and locker rooms, coaches' offices, and on the upper level, a sort of a mezzanine with, you know, the ability to do other, other types of events and exercise and weightlifting, things like that. The elevations, this is more or less fairly straightforward, but elevations, all sides. There's going to be glass, but around the top, there's going to be sort of a clear-story band of cal wall, which will allow natural light into the, all parts of the pool areas at all times, which is nice, it's unusual. We had been asked to do a diagram that showed the section to your right on this drawing, the section that shows the berm that will be heavily planted facing, or sort of between, buffering between the neighbors and the natatorium, and then with the height of the natatorium at 42 feet 9 inches to demonstrate that it was under the 45 feet, and then, of course, signage. And these are the drawings for the ballroom, the plans at two levels, elevation sections. And then finally, the apartments. As Jill mentioned, it's 299 apartments, one and two bedrooms, in a sort of a one-third, two-thirds split. There are 787 cars of parking. The apartments wrap around the parking, single-loaded apartments, so that each tenant who rents will be able to park on the same level of their unit for lots of reasons, obviously convenience, and that also mitigates having to use elevators and things. Obviously, there's elevators and vertical transportation, but for the most part, people who live here will be able to pull in, park, walk straight out of their car in the same level to their, their unit. So there's a certain amount of convenience. And these are the plans, the lowest level, because the site sort of dips as it heads west, the lowest level is going to be used as, you know, the sort of amenity space, fitness center, game rooms, great room, living room spaces, rentable spaces. There's a wide variety of things, and then that wraps around an interior courtyard that's going to be active with fire pits and barbecue and seating and all that, as well as on the south side, a pool, you know, facing south, that'll have outdoor, indoor bar, and the ability to move in and out of the amenity space to the pool and to these courtyard spaces. It'll give residents a lot of different options for socialization. This is the ground floor plan, which is only slightly different than the typical, mainly at the entries to the far left, which is the main entry, and the entry to the garage to the right. And you'll see this in renderings in a bit. This is the typical floor plan that goes from second floor to the seventh floor, all stacking, because, again, it needs to be high-quality. At the same time, it needs to be efficient and cost-effective. The roof, plan with mechanical space on the roof tucked away and recessed from the perimeter, so it won't be, won't be visible. We're talking about doing a green roof and making the building LEED certified, and I think we talked about that last time, but that's still something we're planning to do. And this is a little bit about the multifamily development, transportation amenities, because we've always talked about the idea that the shuttle service that exists at the hotel now would be expanded, and tenants would be able to be using that as well, to go to the train, to go to shopping and things like that. We're trying to cut down on the amount of the need for cars for anybody who comes here. So Zip Cars will be in the garage, so if you decide you want to drive, you can go and get a Zip Car, but you don't need to own a car to be in this, this complex. For those that are, that have an electric car, there'll be charging stations, and there'll be onsite, just like the hotel, 24-hour maintenance and door personnel, so it'll be These are sort of the typical units, one and two-bedroom, there is a couple of, two-bedroom with a den, you know, the larger ones if somebody's looking for a bit more space. For the most part, those two bedrooms are on the corners, so they take advantage of exterior walls on two sides in the apartment. And we didn't show it last time, but we included it in the, in the most recent presentation, the elevations, and all we said was, you know, want to make sure you saw it in terms of the scale relative to the plan, but for the most part, it's a pretty unnatural view. You'd never sort of stand and look at the elevation of a building or get that particular view. So we did rendering so that you could see and understand the scale and the design. The section demonstrates what I was talking about, the site dipping towards the west, and we drop down with the parking and take advantage of that, so that there's a lower level of parking, and we park on the roof, so technically, there's nine levels of parking that fit in the, in the sandwich of a seven-story building. And the section looking through the courtyard. There was a question been asked about the exterior, the materials, the details, and how it all fit together, so put this drawing together, as well as we have a sample. Do you want me to show you the sample, hand it around?
Go ahead.
It's, you know, we want to make sure there's fair amount of windows and it's large glass areas, because a lot of the quality of an interior space comes through the height of the interior, as well as the, the ability to have access to views and ventilation and things like that. So windows, especially in a residence multifamily, are incredibly important. So windows, especially in a residence multifamily are incredibly important. But we also show the details of how that system that I'm handing around, that's, it's sort of a rain screen system that goes in the exterior, be very flat in line with the windows. And you can see in the, in the drawings here, sort of through the balcony, if you will. And then it's always easier to look at renderings, so we, we developed five renderings. This is the, the view you get as you turn from the entry drive heading towards the apartment. The parking is off to the west, the golf course or R1 future zoning is off to the, to the left. But this is the view you get as you, as you arrive. And as you run the corner and come to the drop-off, view of the drop-off, this is looking, looking then west. And you can see with the trees along the edge of Cass Avenue curving around the, the edge of the apartment building. We've been asked to show a detail of what the entry was going to look like, so this is, this is that drawing. It's fairly simple, understated with a glass canopy port-cochere that allows people to wait outside without getting rained on. This is probably a better view of all of that activity I was talking about, the courtyard space that works off of the interior amenity lounges and, and great room. The courtyard has also tivoli lighting to, you know, give it that sort of festive feel day and night, as well as, like I said, fire pits, barbecue area and just socialization spaces, tables and chairs. And then as you wrap around on the south side, there's an outdoor pool, fire pits, barbecue areas, as well as an outdoor bar. And then this is the overall view from sort of the southwest, looking, looking back. And we've talked before about the amenities, you know, everything from the exterior spaces, but also bicycle parking repair, like a bike kitchen where you can take your bike and get it repaired. And everybody's looking to figure out what kind of amenities make, make sense and contribute to the overall desire of these types of apartments in all the markets, so we'll be continuing that research as well. I've already mentioned the amenities. This is that great room rendering of the interior and all the different activities inside in terms of games and living room spaces, bars, party spaces, coffee bars, fitness center. And then the interior of the apartments are meant to, to appeal to people and as a luxury component for multifamily and the bedroom space. And just briefly, the sort of look at a couple of different aerial views, because there was concern about what you see. This is the aerial view looking east. And there will, I'll show you some other closer views, numbered views from pedestrian level as well. But rising up, obviously it's easier to see the building, but you do get a feel for, you know, how the building is sort of nestled in behind the oak grove and behind those trees that run along Cass Avenue. This is looking southwest. And then when you get down to the street level, up in the upper left-hand corner is the view from across the entry drive between Midwest and Cass, looking back at the site in the upper right-hand corner as it exists today, and then with the apartments etched in or dropped in with our, our model. Likewise, the second view, which is on Cass Avenue, looking more north and east as you drive along on the other, or not drive along, but walk along the sidewalk on the other side of the road. Getting on that side, you'll, you'll see more of the apartments. But again, we've layered the apartments behind the landscape and we'll continue to add landscaping as was requested of us. Third view is, is from that sort of roundabout circle just across the street. And the view of upper right-hand is again, what you see now without the building and the lower is what you'll see once the building is built. There's a fourth view that's taken sort of from Midwest Road and really it's pretty much obscured by the, the oak grove. And then across the street on Oakley, because again, backing up and getting farther away, it's easier to see the building. On the other hand, once you get behind some of the trees in those neighboring lots, those are going to start screening the building as well. Just wanted to demonstrate that. And once you come across the street on Cass and you're driving north along Cass or walking on the sidewalk, that landscape is closer to you and obscures the bulk of the vision of the building. And we were asked to take a look from Trinity Lane, but you can't see that at all from Trinity Lane. We laid out one drawing to show sort of the elevations. We were asked to talk about the elevations along Cass Avenue at the building base and then finally on, on the top of the building. This was the first drawing we had done that laid out those elevations. You can see Cass Avenue moves from 745, 750 and finally 755 where the apartments are. The base of the apartments, the courtyard is at 755, similar to the road. The entry at, the, the main entry for the garage and the pedestrians or tenants is at 770. And then we were asked to expand that a little bit and include the, the hotel so that people could understand when they drive in, are they, you know, what's, what is the building like relative to the hotel? The hotel entry is at 761, the top of it's at 882. And what was the top of the apartments, 848? So it's about 34 feet lower than the existing hotel. And then this little elevation study at the bottom is meant to, it's sort of a projected view from the plan I'm showing you and gives you an idea relative to the plan, the height, the scale. You see that the apartments sit a little bit higher up on land because of where they're located. The south side of the hotel is down a little bit, the north side is up at 761, however. So it just gives you just sort of a scale frame of reference. This is the lead checklist, I'm sorry, I can't read it, but we're going to be, have a certified lead project. And then we, you know, there was a lot of discussion about stormwater and preliminary engineering and... We want to walk through all that? I, I think for the most part, happy to answer questions, but all the preliminary engineering, landscape, tree survey, everything else that was required has been submitted and I think signed off on by staff. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
I think at this point, I'm going to go to the public comment section.
Mayor, if I could just make three additions to that presentation. One has to do with the plan development agreement. Do you have a copy of that? It's similar in many, many respects to what was approved last year. It does provide or require the nadatorium owner to come before the village board before large-scale swim meets and provide a parking plan, which may include off-site parking, and to follow up with the village and provide subsequent parking plans to make sure we don't have parking problems in the area. The owner is required to donate land for park purposes and what the owner, or pay cash in lieu of. And because there's land available on this site, the village is requiring a land donation for park purposes. What the owner has agreed to do is go over and above what is required and is donating the front nine holes of the golf course to the park district, is negotiating a lease back where the current owner of the golf course can continue to operate the front nine as a golf course pursuant to the terms of this lease, which I think is upwards of 40 years if all extensions are exercised. And at that point then, the park district takes over the use of the property. In conjunction with that, there's a requirement that a restrictive covenant be recorded against the property, which restricts the uses to certain identified park district uses, golf and limits the type of structures that can go on the golf course property when it's used for park purposes. There is a buffer area that is being created around the existing residences that restricts activities and structures within that buffer area other than golf and walking biking trails. And that will be recorded upon final approval. And I think the negotiations with the park district are about complete or are complete. The park district has reviewed the restrictive covenant and is in agreement with, with the language. It has been shared with the adjacent property owners or at least the association's attorney. And the last thing I'd like to point out is that the effective date in the ordinance, although you're approving these tonight or disapproving them, if you choose to approve them, they will not become effective immediately, the approvals, because there is an outstanding mortgage and note on the golf course property, which is under separate ownership from the hotel property. And until that mortgage and note get paid off, development cannot occur on the portions of this project and of all the golf course. And indications are that may come fairly quickly. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. At all village board meetings, I give an opportunity during an agenda item for public comment. And it's limited to three minutes and we've already had two extensive public hearings on this at planning and zoning. The village board has seen recordings of those meetings and listened to it. Again, we welcome the public comment tonight, but it is subject to our public comment rules. You know, we'd like to know if you're representing a group, please indicate that, that you're here representing this homeowners association. If not, then you're here to speak for yourself. And if you can consolidate comments, would be greatly helpful. What we'd like to do is, I guess, one at a time, there's no order, whoever jumps up first, second, if the next person wants to talk can get behind the podium, you can keep this moving, so.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, yes. So at this point, who would like to be first?
Good evening, Mayor Gunter, trustee Addington and other trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to express my ideas here. I'm Dr. Raj Rajaram. I represent the Committee for Responsible Development of Northwestmont. And I am president of the Trinity Lakes Improvement Association. As you know, we are located across the proposed development and our subdivision extends from 35th Street to 31st Street and from Midwest Road to St. Prichard Drive. And I've been a resident there for the last 27 years. I'm an environmental professional and in my career of 43 years, I've been involved in many environmental projects and stormwater control projects in the Chicagoland area. Recently, I and my colleague Jim Patchett completed the green infrastructure plan for the University of Illinois campus in Chicago. And based on what can be done with modern green infrastructure technologies, I feel this, this project is not utilizing those opportunities. The stormwater plans, looked at it very briefly in the village hall and then the testimony provided in previous hearings, there is some controversy about whether it's waters flowing towards 35th Street or everything flowing south. And so I'm concerned that flooding on 35th Street where I live and several of our committee members live is going to be affected by not including enough green infrastructure and proper stormwater planning in this project. So I, I am urging the trustees to consider stormwater flooding of 35th Street and adjoining neighborhoods like mine resulting from the proposed development. The developer should be required to implement green infrastructure and other measures to keep the stormwater from the development within their property and not adversely affect the neighbors whom I represent. Modern stormwater management techniques have not been incorporated in the design as far as I have seen it. And I request the village trustees to make the stormwater plan available to me and other interested parties so that we can independently review them for adequate, for adequacy before the final permits are given for this project.
Good, thank you.
Any questions?
No, we're going to try to get all the comments in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We got a gentleman coming up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Hardigan and I live at 3525 Cass Court in the Royal Hills condominium there. I'm a member of the board and I've been asked by the board and also our neighbors at the Saddlebrook Development to critique the traffic report that was in the documents you received. Let me make an observation first. I think this is my first physical presence here at a board meeting. Now, I've seen you all on television and I must say, you televise very well. I got two surprises with the traffic report. One, the intersection at Midwest Road and 35th Street, that's at the north property line, that intersection has, is going to have some severe congestion problems, but it's wholly within the village of Oakbrook, I understand. So I guess that's their problem. Secondly, I was also surprised, but pleasantly so, that the intersection of 35th, the Willowcrest Drive and Cass is going to operate fairly well, no congestion. However, I won't say the same thing about traffic on the property. Look at the report and you'll see what I mean. However, it's not going to be without impact. I have calculated that under normal conditions, 19 vehicles will be added to the peak hour on 35th Street. This is on the Westerly section of 35th Street. But at the same time, I look and I say, what about the nadatorium? Well, the report says it's going to occur, the major activity will occur other than at peak hours. So if you have a swim meet at 3 o'clock, I think that you might have an impact at the 5 or 5:30 peak hour on 35th Street. But even more than that, I find that the additional apartments and additional single-family dwellings are going to add some traffic. It's all supposed to be built into this report. However, I live there and I take 35th Street many times because it's very convenient. When the owners and the renters and so on at the apartment building and in the single-family homes become acclimated, I'm sure that they're going to use 35th Street in lieu of 31st or Ogden Avenue if they want to go west or coming from the west. So I have anticipated that the peak hour could move from 19 vehicles up to maybe 40, 50 during the peak hour. Now, maybe that doesn't bother you, but remember, 35th Street, the south side is all single-family The north side is a bike trail and hiking path. Those people are going to be impacted and there's just no, no way around it. But that's my presentation. May I leave a copy of my report with?
You can give it to the chief. He'll come on up and get it from the chief. We'll get it from him.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Hardigan is very modest and he forgot to tell you that he worked 25 years for IDOT. I've got some handouts. I'm Alan Coran and I live in the Saddlebrook subdivision. I'm a Saddlebrook Community Association Board member and I'm a member of the Committee for Responsible Development in Northwestmont. My wife and I and our three children lived in a home for 14 months in Oakwood, in the Oakwood section of Westmont, not too far from Lake Charles, which made us Westmont residents. We all want nothing but the best for the village of Westmont. So we got multiple goals, but we really want good things for, for Westmont. And so we want to talk about public safety because that's a very important factor that you need to consider at all times. I'm going to give you an overview of our fire concerns for the combined seven-story apartment and nine-story garage. We are concerned that the developer is combining the risk of a parking garage fire with the risk of a high-rise apartment fire. The risk is compounded by locating both on top of a 770 to 776 foot high bluff. The bluff is the highest point at Oakbrook Hills and the surrounding area, including The, the top of the building is 848 feet high. The average wind speed is approximately twice as high at this height as it would be at ground level. Questions from our residents. Number one, might high wind speeds fan a fire in a building of this type on a bluff? Number one, might high wind speeds fan a fire in a building of this type on a bluff? There are no other buildings or hills to the west to block the prevailing westerly wind. There's only the valley below. Number two, can fire from burning autos extend to the apartments? Number three, will firemen have to enter the burning parking garage at times on foot to put out the fire? I know at other times it'll be by truck, but it might be also by foot. The parking garage is surrounded by the apartment, so it's hard to get to. How difficult does this make it for the firemen to access the interior? Number four, will there be sufficient airflow visibility in the garage if a gasoline fire or fires occur with thick, black smoke? Number five, is it possible for a doorway to the apartment to jam in the open position during a garage fire? Number six, is any foam being used in the construction? I assume it's not, that would be flammable. Number seven, are there going to be any long interior hose stretches? Request for information continuance. We've been able to see the ten-ten-seventeen site plan rejection letter and the ten-thirty-one-seventeen site plan approval letter from Larry Kaufman, Director of the Fire Prevention Bureau. However, we have not seen the preliminary view nor the fire department overall approval letter. Are any fire code variances being approved? We are requesting this information and asking for a thirty-day continuance to give us time to review these reports respectfully. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
No, we're going to get through it to speakers first. Thank you.
I'm going to introduce my next speaker. Wayne Pritzl is our next speaker. He's a retired chemical refinery engineer who is very concerned with fire prevention in his work.
Thank you.
Wayne?
Thank you. Mayor, trustees. Hello, my name is Wayne Pritzl. I'm a member of this Committee for Responsible Development in Northwestmont. My background is that of a chemical engineer with a degree in petroleum refining engineering. I spent thirty-five years working in several petroleum refineries and fifteen years working in a corn wet mill, milling plant. Firefighting training is very important in these types of industrial plants. The developer has indicated he will meet fire code for both the parking garage and apartments. Installation of a water sprinkler system was indicated for the garage. Garage is estimated to contain seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven parking spaces distributed across the nine levels of the garage, while the ninety-three-foot-high, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine apartment building surrounding the garage is estimated to house about five-hundred-and-sixty-six people. These parking spaces will not be completely filled all the time, but could possibly be close to filling during an event at the auditorium. With an estimated seven-hundred cars in the garage during one of these events and estimating ten gallons of gasoline in each car, this amounts to like seven-thousand gallons of highly flammable fuel distributed throughout the garage. Garage fires are rare but do occur, such as one that occurred in a Chicago Loop parking garage in June of this year. There were twelve cars that burned, total of six of them, and six others were damaged. National Fire Protection Agency estimates that of all the reported fires, about twenty percent are vehicle fires. Gasoline fires associated with automobile fires occur when the gasoline tank boils over, is ruptured, or explodes from a fire. Water will spread a gasoline fire since gasoline floats on water. Water sprinklers will not extinguish a gasoline fire, only spread the fire. Foam or dry chemicals are required to extinguish gasoline fires. If the garage floors are sloped as it appeared in the developer's presentation, it could cause the fire to spread further down. Today's cars now use large amounts of plastics, which can account for up to fifty percent of the car. More and more car parts are made of magnesium, such as seats, dashboards, roof components, as well as wheels. Magnesium and aluminum fires are a special situation and cannot be extinguished with typical fire extinguishing material. Currently, there are alternate fuel vehicles in use, such as electric, which include large battery banks and hybrid vehicles. Fires on these vehicles require knowing what type of vehicles involved before trying to properly extinguish the fire. Vehicle fires can produce black smoke, toxic gases, as well as carbon monoxide. Does everyone recognize that a water sprinkler system will not extinguish a gasoline fire, burning metal, or a battery fire? We continue to be concerned about only one entry/exit serving the apartment complex, hotel, convention center, auditorium, and townhomes, and a currently proposed fire extinguishing system in a building that contains both autos and people across all seven floors.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to? You don't have to be bashful. Just come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Adam Clerk, village trustees. My name's Frank Gonzalez. I live at thirty-five twenty-five South Cass Court, and I am the 2018 President of the Board, as well as a member of the Committee for Responsible Development of Northwestmont. I'd like to take a few moments to express my feelings towards this project. I will be brief. I do not object to the building of the auditorium, as I mentioned at the planning and zoning meetings, nor do I object to the building of the apartment and parking complex. I do object to the closeness of the apartment and the parking complex to Cass Avenue and ultimately Royal Hills Club condominium association's property. Last meeting, Mr. Dumont, the developer, said that they just don't want an apartment building in their backyard. Well, he's right. We don't. Would he if he lived there? There are a number of reasons that I don't like it, including it doesn't fit into the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It will be a huge white monolith. No matter what happens there, there will not be enough tree cover to hide the building during the months with leaves on the tree, much less the other five or six months of the year. Not to mention the traffic issues that will undoubtedly be created despite the presented research. Let's face it, this is Northwestmont. The majority of the Westmont residents do not know or understand the scope of what's happening here. I've spent some time reviewing the Village of Westmont's comprehensive plan. I spoke on this at our last planning, zoning and planning meeting, and I won't spend a lot of time here, I won't read each one, but there are several items there that I don't feel are in the direction of the plan, was to build a three-hundred apartment building anywhere in the village. In fact, I quote, "At the most basic level, the comprehensive plan should direct orderly growth and change, as well as maintain and enhance livability in the village." I printed for the record a few specific quotes excerpted from the plan, which can be found within the village's website, speaking against more apartment buildings in Westmont. For sake of expediency, I will not read or contribute editorial. The linking page from the village's site says the following, "Westmont's comprehensive plan," which is a very large plan, "updates, provides a great opportunity for residents to communicate what they believe to be the strengths and weaknesses of the community, and to prioritize what issues are most important for the village to address in near term and into the future. The planning process is designed to promote community involvement and encourage citizen participation. Community outreach is included throughout the entire planning process. We know that the success of this planning effort will depend on engaging our community." I fail to see how a building, an apartment, parking structure of this size was something that the people and the businesses of Westmont want in their village. Thank you all for listening. Thank you for your service. Happy holidays, and please stay safe.
Thank you.
Let me mention, too, that this wonderful young man who just talked is one of our lead volunteers on the red, white, and barbecue, and has done a phenomenal job for us.
Well, that's tough to follow. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, village trustees. I'm Joan Gagan, President of the Indian Trail Townhome Association. Indian Trail consists of a hundred-and-eighty townhomes built in the early 1980s, and were located at Thirty-Ninth and Cass, across from the Oakbrook Hills Golf Course. So we're directly impacted by this projected development. We're not against development, and we certainly are not against the resulting increased tax revenues, but we have concerns, concerns that you have heard. Since many of these concerns relate to fire and public safety, I propose that the village have an independent consultant perform a risk assessment study. This is such an unusual development that there's just no way that there's anything that just exists that is very obvious. In particular, it is the one entry egress and other examples of fire and safety issues. It's money well spent. God forbid that there's traffic accidents, fire accidents that get publicity that adversely affect the village, and of course, if it's really bad, everyone gets sued. That's just the way it is. As Westmont resident who will be here after the developer is gone, please listen seriously to our concerns and proposals. This is the last major land development in Westmont. It's a legacy development, so please make sure that it's truly world-class Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
I'm Alan Hanslick, also a member of the same committee, and you can breathe a sigh of relief because I am the last speaker for our committee. As my colleagues have said, we're not opposed against this development. We understand it, the builder, and you folks have a right to proceed with it. We are opposed to certain aspects of it, and we don't believe that some key facts are coming across loudly and clearly that need to be heard. This fairly new concept, a Texas Rep apartment parking garage, is three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred square feet in size. It's seven stories tall, ninety-five feet high, located, proposed to be located on a bluff that is thirty feet above Cass Avenue. So to the neighbors surrounding the area that you have heard from, they will be looking at the equivalent of a nine-story building where they have one and two-story homes or condominiums. It is proposed to be fifty feet off of the Cass curve, fifty feet. To put it in perspective, and the pictures that we see up here are not putting this building in perspective. It is almost three times the size of Costco. Everybody goes to Costco, we love it. So picture that building, three times the size, sitting fifty feet off of the Cass curve. If you go to the hotel and look at it, it is forty percent larger in square footage than the hotel. Now, the hotel is well inward of the property. It is not nearly as visible as this building will be with the currently proposed location. There is a, and Jill and her staff have done a wonderful job in making sure there is a safety harbor for those one- and two-hundred-year-old oaks. But we have worked with two reputable tree companies, and they are telling us, if you are disturbing the soil within a hundred-and-sixty feet of those oaks, within five years, they will probably get oak blight and they will die. You are within one-hundred-and-sixty feet of those oaks. If you look at it as a neighbor, as these people have come up, we saw all of the oak trees. Those oak trees that exist will not cover a ninety-five-foot building on a thirty-foot bluff. They will cover maybe two or three stories. But nowhere in this design, if you keep it there, is there any proposal to put pine trees along the hill on Cass so that the neighbors that are directly across have some shield from this very large building? You need fifty, sixty, seventy-foot pines if you're really going to be honest and want to shade it. Those oak trees, as configured on these diagrams, will not disguise the totality of that building. And lastly, you've heard, we have concerns about one entry, one exit to serve nineteen-hundred vehicles, one entry, one exit with turnarounds, fire trucks. Think of, hopefully, the remote possibility of some disaster occurring in the auditorium with twelve-hundred people in it. You have one way in, you have one way out, you have nineteen-hundred vehicles clogging, potentially, those streets. Are you going to be best in class at getting to that disaster? We don't understand why you don't have two entries and exits. We don't understand it. We are proposing a compromise, and that would be to move, to move the apartment parking garage inward. Maybe I can turn this. The parking garage. There you go. The parking garage apartment inward for, and to rotate it. And what this would accomplish, basically, is the land that it would be moved closer to the hotel runs fifteen to twenty-five feet lower than the ridge. So to the neighbors in the area, you immediately get a benefit of a two-story reduction. Second of all, it's moved inward, so those trees will also help mitigate the large aspects of this building. Second of all, you won't be anywhere near those old oak trees. You are further away. Third of all, there are less trees that will be destroyed in the path of this building. So we're asking that you give consideration to such a move. It would still allow the complex to be built, it would allow the same-size apartment, the same number of garages. It takes it further than fifty feet away from the Cass curve. We know the developer will not favor this. I mean, who would want to redraw a plan, right? But this building is going to be your legacy for the next seventy years, and what we would hope that you don't want to do is make this the Thompson Center of Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? At this point, I'm going to close the public comment section and ask the developer if he has any additional comments to respond to.
We do not, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll open it up to the trustees. Let's see a little.
I'd like to ask if you're planning to do the green roof with a garden still on the apartment building?
We're definitely planning on the green roof, and all of our research shows that the planting is the most economically feasible way to do it, so kind of a win-win. And we also look to loop in the school district on that so we can do field trips and stuff up there. It'd be kind of a cool thing.
Any pervious materials for the walkways and parking areas?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Any pervious materials being used?
There's some shown, yeah. I'm not exactly sure of the entire scope of it. But yeah, there's a, I think the area near the parking spots with an auditorium and then by the apartments. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mayor.
Trustee Barker?
Yeah, I just, you know, I have to say something just because this is such a big project. I wanted to thank the planning and zoning for the hours and hours that they put in. And we, you know, I won't speak for everybody else, but I watched it all, I heard it all. I've got two pages or three pages of notes of everything that was talked about this evening. A lot of it was repeated, which doesn't make it bad, but I thank the residents, I thank planning and zoning. Planning and Zoning, and I thank the staff for all the work that they did to make this project. I mean, it was a good project before. I supported it before, and it is a much better project now with all the input. I appreciate that, the safety concerns. With the fire, I actually, you know, I talked to our chief. I had heard the comments back and forth, but then I also talked to another fire chief on why there is risks to car fires in parking garages. This is what fire departments do, so I'm comfortable why there is a risk there. I'm comfortable that our fire department with an ISO-1 is equipped to handle those kinds of things. Nobody wants a, you know, nobody wants a garage fire, but, you know, there are ways to deal with this. I know our codes are tough. I know that the national codes are tough. I know Larry Kaufman is tough, and I'm confident that we're in good hands there. And then I did talk, or I did hear Mr. Noriega talk about stormwater and how that's going to work there on that site, as well as the presentation that these gentlemen made. You know, I believe it, and I know our stormwater has been a focus with Trustee Carroll. Our stormwater has been a focus for several years now, and we are tough, and we are doing what we're supposed to do, and we're tougher than DuPage County, so I'm confident in that. So again, I just want to say thank you to everybody that worked so hard on this. I believe I had another point, but I think I said enough, you know.
But if you think of it, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yes.
Big Guzzo?
Yes, I too had the opportunity to watch both planning and zoning board meetings. I do agree with Trustee Barker's comments about the fire department. I believe our fire department is well-equipped and well-trained, and I have no doubts of their expertise. Secondly, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill or Noriel, with the, in regards to the stormwater, doesn't it need to go to DuPage County prior to final permits being issued, and they also have to sign off on it as well? Am I correct on that?
Incorrect.
Oh, okay.
We could, we could handle everything in-house with our consultant and our engineering staff as, for the actual permit review. The only time it actually has to go to DuPage County is if there's a special management area that is being affected, wetland, flood plain and such. That's when we would require them to also submit to the county.
And I, and I know over the years, even at the few years I've been here, I know we've made stormwater management a priority. I have the most confidence in our economic development and our public works and our engineering department. I do want to say thank you to everyone who's come on out and voiced their concerns and everything. It's, it's been just great to see everybody kind of work together to come up with ideas, and I appreciate everybody's ideas and comments this evening, so.
Thank you. Just to add to that, and I think Manager May could, but DuPage County sets a certain standard for stormwater unless it has an area like a wetland, and we're above those standards.
Always have been.
Always have been.
Yeah, Mayor, I did think of it.
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Barker.
If I may, thank you. I think that while it is a big building, the one thing that I would, I would hate to see lost on this whole thing, and this goes right to Mr. Dumont, when we talk about a Westmont project, it would make me feel real good that when this thing is marketed, that Westmont's name gets out there if it's approved.
The mailing address is restricted by the deed. Naming, I think you're going to be very pleasantly surprised in more than one area, including the open space. We're going to do some, we haven't talked about this much, but we're going to do some pretty unique things. We're shrinking from meeting, you know, what I would consider good holes right now to nine once renovated, really interesting holes, and that will, you know, have a name that directly ties back to Westmont.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then I'll need, we're going to go a motion.
Back to my question list, do we do this as 12?
I'm going to read the first one, and we'll need a motion to prove that.
Individually.
Each one individually, okay.
So the first one, comprehensive plan amendment request to redesign approximately 67 acres of open space to approximately 27 acres of general, commercial, and approximately 40 acres of single-family detached residential. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made, and second comments, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
You should still call his name every time and let him recuse himself.
I will.
Item three, text amendment request to amend Appendix A, Section 7.06 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding residential uses in the B3 Special Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Barker.
Motion made, and second, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee, you recuse yourself.
Recuse.
You should still call his name every time and let him recuse himself.
I will.
Item three, text amendment request to amend Appendix A, Section 7.06 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding residential uses in the B3 Special Business District.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Number four, text amendment request to amend Appendix A, Article 11 of the Westmont Zoning Code to permit electronic message board signs in the B3 Special Business District.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made, and second, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion carries. Number five, a map, map amendment request to rezone approximately 27 acres from the B3 Special Business District to a planned development overlay district in the underlying B3 Special Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion been made, and second, roll call, please.
Just on the question.
On the question for you.
Yeah, both for number one and for this item. It says approximately 27, 27 acres is actually approximately 34 acres.
Roll call.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion passes. Number six, special use permit request to permit residential dwelling units in the B3 Special Business District. Do I have a motion?
So, so move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
On the question, none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of signs permitted in the B3 Special Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
On the question, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion passes. Number eight, zoning code variance request to reduce the total required number of parking spaces in the B3 Special Business District. Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
On the question, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number nine, preliminary and final concept plan approval, and landscape plan approval for the new construction of an auditorium in a multifamily dwelling complex included in a phased site and landscaping plan, including a phased site and landscaping plan.
So move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, and second, comments, questions, roll call.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion passes. Number 10, preliminary subdivision approval.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
No questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion passes. Number 11, planned development agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Addington.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Motion passes. And the last one is voiding the previous development approvals made on September 8, 2016, for the property.
So move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion been made, and second, it.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Again, I want to thank everybody that was part of this process. It was, it was a good project. No, it's a great project. I appreciate all the work that went into it.
Any additional from the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Recuse.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. So one last, I do have a comment, and in the five years I've been mayor, this is the first opportunity we had from a developer to listen to everybody, reach out and try to make some changes based on a lot of comments. And I know the first approval, we, a lot of those individuals that were on the zoning board and residents were looking for the project to be moved further west. But at that point, developer could not because they didn't have control of the golf course. And then with all the different situations that come up with the residents that live on that property, we, they've been meeting with them, been trying to resolve the issues, and at this point, they have been. So I think this developer has reached out and tried to at least answer the question. May not like it, but he has been very open, and I also say our staff has been totally involved, and they still will be. There's a lot of final approval that will come before us. So with that, anybody have anything? We will move on. The last item is miscellaneous. Does anybody have any items they'd like to?
Right.
Yes.
No, Raj.
What's that mean?
You have to wait for a minute. Talk barbecue.
Secret barbecue.
It's a lion.
Yeah, I know, but secret barbecue talk.
He wants a ride home.
Anything, any other comments? Again, everybody, wish everybody a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas. We do not have an executive session tonight, so at this point, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move Addington.
Second, Nero.
Motion made, and second to adjourn, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
I appreciate everybody here, and thank you.